Um, please, Dr. Maliko.
Yeah, I do feel the need to respond since I was mentioned in this.
Absolutely.
And I think there's some misinformation out there. In fact, we were talking about the Fortson situation. I was very responsive. I'm not going to get into the, uh, exact communication, but I don't think, um, what was read was the full extent of that evening when I was at a presentation and had talked to administration and our head of, uh, safety and security and Mr. Addy. And we immediately made sure that there were IT departments at Fortson. Now, one of the things that we're going through, and I think we've been very proactive actually in this, is our, um, active shooter training and our Alice training. And so some of that has been going on for a while, but we are in a transition where students are learning the appropriate roles between barricading a classroom and when you need to do that. The truth of the matter is when it's a soft lockdown, it is an extra precaution. There's no imminent danger to a school. And we are ensuring, in fact, we just talked about it again, and Mr. Littery, he's nodding his head. So one of the things we do have to do is get more information out there, um, to the public, to the parents about what these different circumstances are. But really, this is a, uh, situation where there may have been something in the area, and the soft lockdown is you're locking the perimeters of the door. And so that is on us. We're going to make sure we continue to train. But as we've been dealing with COVID and all other things of health, uh, I can tell you we've been very, very proactive. And it wasn't just, oh, it's only a few minutes. And I think President Mazza knows they said we're doing this, this, and this. And we were on the phone with our department making sure we were on it right away. With the CAREHOC system, we are in a transition, okay? It is not fully operational because it is a major project. And so all of our administrators know, we just talked to them about this, was, and we've been talking about this for a while, about having redundant communication systems. So in a emergency, you don't want to just rely on one because even if the CAREHOC system, for example, was up and running, um, there is a chance that you could have an electrical issue. So I just felt the need to, to mention on that that I, I disagree. We were very responsive as we're moving on a new system. But student safety is number one priority, always will be. And we got on top of it right away. And I think the IT department was out the very next, uh, morning. Uh, I also just want to say, um, you know, just briefly, generally, you know, some of the, the vision and the work that we do, um, is done through our strategic planning. And we're proud right now that we're using some of our general fund dollars and what was, uh, to expand the partnership with the early college. Uh, we are a national leader when it comes to that in working with the Henry Ford College. So some of that vision is the amount of money that we're saving with our students doing well when they go to not only Henry Ford College, but all the other colleges. Um, I think some of the comments made about, I guess what I was saying with this 30-year plan is trying to respect the dialogue that came out of the committee and some of the ideas. And I think it's important, you know, that we do have buy-in from the community. We also know that the STEM has been, uh, a po- popular thing. So I think there's more to come on that. And that's why in front here, we have that ability to really connect a lot of the infrastructure with, as you heard Mr. Wa- Wall say, um, the instructional programs of what you want to do to advance, um, on instructional level, not just because of the infrastructure upgrades, but because you may want common spaces or you may want more innovation. The one thing I pride myself on is going, and I was at the national conference, I did the school visit. And I got to see more innovation there on career and technical, even in an earlier age at an elementary and middle school. And I do that every time so I get a broader view of what's going on nationally. We are a national leader, we're a state leader. We'll continue to do that. I do see right now the infrastructure is the biggest challenge right now facing Dearborn schools. I'm willing to take it on with all of you board members, working together with the community. And there will be differing ideas and disagreements, but I'm, I'm confident that we will, uh, persevere for the benefit of the students that we all serve here. So, thank you.
Uh, one other thing, Dr. Maliko. Would you just address real quickly, um, the, about the fund balance? And, uh, we, as a, a board for a long time, struggled with the fund balance. And then every Sunday, summer, we had to borrow money when money wasn't coming in. So that's an additional expense. So would you just kind of address?
Sure.
And how much of that fund balance is, is needed? And what it, uh, what, like in the case of an emergency? What would we need to have on hand?
And what the state requires.
Well, the state requires a minimal of 5%. And so you get a, um, you get a notification letter if you go below that 5%. Now, the issue that you're stating is there's two months, and Mr. Walk can correct me, in the summer, we're not paid by state foundation. So if you do not have a fund balance, you still have to meet payroll and all the other costs you have over that 12-month period. So what was happening was we would have to borrow money. In their view, we'd pay interest on it. We no longer have to do that. The other issue with the fund balances is you have an aging infrastructure. For example, we had an electrical issue. We had upgrades at Dearborn High. Uh, we had something that, that happened over at the transportation, or not transportation, the operations of transportation with, you know, some of the gas, uh, lines that we had to take care of. They're immediate, uh, issues that you must address. The Oakman plumbing issue. These are things that you just have to address that weren't planned. But that's why we add. And I can tell you, um, we have added to, if you look at that graph, we've added to the, to our operational upgrade budget every year since 2015. And again, we went through some, some challenges then. And, and the, uh, the board, um, I remember when I became superintendent, was we needed to take care of that fund balance. Um, at the time, it was Trustee Guido who was talking to me. And, you know, telling me, you know, we want to take care of that so we're not paying these higher interest rates. So, um, they're all decisions we, we make. But I also have to say that when you're making, you know, those decisions that we possibly made in 2011, 12, 13, um, were decisions where we understood that the infrastructure was there, but there was a 2013 bond. So some of that was taken care of. And then what you were looking at, um, was, you know, students and the instructional needs in the classroom and not having massive class size. So those were some of the historical decisions that we've had to make as a team.
And when you make a decision, you have to sometimes, you know, weigh it between something that you're not putting money towards. Trustee Barry.
Sorry, Tom. But, uh, two questions. Uh, part of that, uh, fund balance, didn't we put money aside there for?
Correct. When we sold the house school.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that was on Oakwood Boulevard. We sold it for, I think, 2.7 million roughly. We put that money aside for future use for replacement building at some point.
Sure.
So then when we're talking about the early college program, we're using those funds out of our fund balance. The biggest thing on, on the school funding for fund balances, they recommend anywhere from 15 to 20% for district operations. The state operates on an October through September timeframe. We operate July through August. So by June 30th, we don't, we still haven't received, you know, $30 million from the state that they owe us for last year. And they don't start their new payments until October. So really, you have, you know, July, August, September, three months that we have to operate without any general fund money from the state. So that's where we got into that borrowing aspect where, when we were try- trying to make payroll for that timeframe. So that's where we were dealing with a lot of cash flow issues. You know, before, we have low fund balances around the May time. We really had to be very careful on that whole process. We're out of that, by the way. We're dealing with the enhancement funds of banking that money the first year and then spending it the second year. That took care of our cash flow. We're at roughly 17, 18% right now in our fund balance. So we're at the point now where we can take, potentially take some of that money out of the fund balance for a short-term solution for dealing with our building projects. So that is, there's a little bit of money there to consider that option.
When you answered my second question, it's $30 million gap that we have to cover.
Correct.
Now, we remember when we used to borrow that money and interest on $30 million.
Right. 70% of our revenue comes from the state. And as anyone who watches any state politics, it's not a, a sure thing that we're going to get paid. That, that goes through a logistic process at their level. And if they have a hiccup, you know, that turns down and flows downhill to us.
So quoting my good friend, the late John Tanner, "No good deed goes unpunished." The fact that we're saving all that interest, putting it back into, you know, programs and curriculum, with, you know, it seems like the public needs to punish.
We're going to get criticized no matter what.
No, no, it's, it's, it's okay. That information needs to come out.
Right.
Thank you very much.
It's something we look at very closely.
Thank you.
trustee Thorpe.
Going back to the, the first comment when it was talked about, um, being innovative and, and maybe looking at, uh, other buildings that might be empty. This board has looked at that previously. Uh, we've brought it up to the administration. One of the big things that we run into is that the codes that those buildings are built to aren't stringent as what we have to do for a school. And because of that, it usually takes it to the point where that, tho- those existing buildings aren't feasible for us.
Uh, along with that, their locations are usually, um, not in a neighborhood conducive to the student population and would be requiring boundary changes, busing and whatever for a lot of those empty properties. They're not i- i- immediately within the prescribed boundaries that already exist. I would also like to add one thing. Um, and, and it just bothered me when I had seen, um, a Facebook posting with your email being exposed. And I would like to read something that's on the bottom of all of your emails, which says confidentiality notice. This email contains information from the sender that may be confidential, legally privileged, proprietary, or otherwise protected from disclosure. This email is intended for use only by the person or entity to which it is addressed. An email that's being posted on Facebook that was not sent to the person who was posting it, I believe is in violation of this confidentiality agreement. And it bothers me that these kinds of emails are being dispersed amongst the community without the full context of its meaning and, and, um, premise of who it was intended to be responded to. And I have real issues with people in the community sharing it in a manner that is used to criticize our superintendent when they don't understand the, um, full context of, of those communications and use it to, um, spread a message that may potentially be, um, damaging to the, uh, district on the whole. And I would like to make sure that people are careful in the ways that they, um, consider what they want to post on social media.
I believe President Mazza would like to address the board, so please come up.
Yeah, hello, Dr. Maliko. School board members, I, I want to apologize. I'm going to take full responsibility for sending that email out to a member. And, uh, it was a mistake. And unfortunately, the citizen that spoke earlier, I knew, I don't know her. I don't know it was posted. A lot of this was done without my knowledge. I thought I was only communicating to one member. I learned a very valuable lesson in this one to make sure I read the whole email before I forward something. I was trying to be very transparent with this particular member because there've been issues in the past. So I wanted to not paraphrase Dr. Malenko's words. But we're very supportive. I've been supportive. I did not appreciate my name and my, uh, position being thrown out on Facebook. I don't appreciate it being brought up in a blue card. I don't know this, this community member. And I'm, I'm kind of insulted that they would throw in the union because I do not work for the district. I work for my members. This person is not a member of my union. So they don't really get to speak as a member supporting, uh, the union because they're an outsider. So again, I apologize to the board. I'm going to take full responsibility for sending that email. It was absolutely wrong of me to do that. It was a breach of confidence, and I do apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, President Mazza.
I, I had one question, President.
Trustee Mazza.
Thank you. Um, it's for Tom again, sorry. So, um, we were talking about borrowing. And I think I may have asked this question again, but it's very important to note it in this discussion. Uh, other districts and other municipalities too, are they doing this kind of system where they're still borrowing?
Uh, for some districts, yes. Because they, they don't have the financial means to stay abreast of all the costs. So the state does do annual borrowing on behalf of districts, and they have to pay the interest cost for those borrowings, yes.
Is that a, a big number?
Uh, it depends. Every district can be different depending on their financial needs and what costs they have.
Thank you.
Don't go anywhere.
Just one thing I wanted to mention on fund balance, Tom. When the enhancement mileage first came to us, we deliberately planned part of that to save.
Correct.
Was to actually move the enhancement dollars into the next year so that we were actually saving money. So it does give you a higher fund balance.
Right. So 70 million of that current money in our fund balance is that sinking year from the previous year.
So that, but that's a strategy we, we used so that we wouldn't pay interest early on. But it does service well because that money ultimately does go for the students in some way or another.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Next item.
Um, it's board discussion, but I feel like we're already in the board discussion.
Yeah, we're moving into board discussion already.
So next is board discussion.
I already gave you more than the allotment of time. So we appreciate your comments. If you have some further, um, questions or comments, you can address the administration, give them a call, contact them.
Okay, I feel like the response is more alarming than my initial, um, bringing your attention. The fact that you're focusing on an email rather than endangerment.
We were listening to your, and that has been listened and has been addressed. If you have further comments.
I just want to make that clear.
We can bring it to, you can bring it to the administration. Trustee Barry.
Just real quickly, I, I respect what trustee Petrikov said. Confidentiality is confidentiality. So whoever got that email from President Mazza and forwarded, that's, that's on them, that's, that's on their conscience. But, uh, the, the, the issues that were brought up, this is something we've been dealing with for a long time. It doesn't go unnoticed. Uh, President Mazza, I just want to comment real quickly. I personally, I don't know about anybody else, but I personally didn't feel like it was a personal attack on you. It was a point that the community member was trying to bring. That's all. I, just my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I did think of that way.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, yeah.
That was my opinion as well.
Yeah.
That's how I felt about it.
I don't think it was directed. It was just like a message our speaker was trying to throw out.
Anyone else? Okay.
So as, that now we're in discussion, I just wanted, um, to mention something about communication. And some of the citizen, uh, speakers mentioned transparency and information, uh, making information available. Um, and it's very, very crucial to pass whatever we, if we have a potential bond or if we have a potential sinking fund, whatever that might be, is that we're being very, very transparent. I think I've said this multiple times. Information is key. And this information has to be accurate. This information has to be available and accessible in, in, in a very easy way for the constituents to know exactly what we're proposing. And what are those things that we, with this kind of money, what are the projects that we will be delivering? Now, we could be doing all of the right things, but we might not be seeing eye to eye with our constituents. They might be looking at other places where they're fed, fed information. And sometimes they're very unfortunately misinformed. And we have to get to that reality. Yes, we are in a political world and, uh, the city has, has a problem of taxes. And there are groups who will oppose us no matter what. It doesn't matter what kind of project that we will bring forward. They will be opposed to those taxes. And I, I, I respectfully, you know, um, that, that's their opinion. We live in a free world here, in a free country, um, where they can respectfully disagree. However, what I don't appreciate is when folks start misusing, for example, my own words or trying to spread fake news. It's essentially fake news and saying, oh, this, for example, last bond was going to be 480 million in its total cost. When in, in reality, it's not. Um, I, I would like to be, our, our district, and this is not directed to you, Mr. Meston, this is definitely, you know, for all of us as even board trustees when we educate ourselves and we learn more about these things. So when we are being asked about this, that we're perhaps the most knowledgeable. And that's why we're asking you all of the questions. So I could be the most knowledgeable. And if I, um, I don't know the answer for, I will want to tell the constituent, I'll come back with, uh, answers for you. But we want to present this information in a very innovative way, that we want to do innovative solutions to this district. At the same time, we want to win a lot of folks. I said this, and I'm going to say it again. I would not be happy with a 51% win. That would make it sound like it's still 49% of our constituents are not still on the same page with us. And hopefully, we will focus more on that. And that, to, to present information as is. We're not trying, obviously, as a district, we should not be telling voters to vote yes or no. We will tell the, the, I'm sorry. Yeah, tell voters, uh, or constituents. We're asking our constituents to support their schools because these buildings are their schools. It's not the school board, it's not the teachers, it's not just the students. Everybody is invested in these schools. Everyone who lives in this city has some kind of interest in these schools and a value in these schools. And if these schools are supported very well, then that will bring a lot of benefit to everybody. Um, and, uh, everybody knows those benefits. And they have to be articulated in a way where we're getting as many people as possible to, to come out and vote. So definitely, we learned from last time. Do not put this on a ballot where it's the only thing on the ballot. Right? We want to be able to have more people participate. Democracy, again, is, is better when more people participate. We have now, according to our, uh, city clerk, uh, 77,000 registered voters in our district. That includes Dearborn and the area on Dearborn Heights. Uh, and in a presidential election, we do get almost 60% of the people to vote, which is a good number for an election. And in a midterm, probably 55 or in that range. Um, but it's, it's very important that we present this bond or this proposal, I'm not going to call it bond right now because we haven't even decided, by listening to folks and engaging them into making this solution. Um, and we're here to make the tough, tough decisions. And we will make those tough decisions whether we go for a proposal or not. And that will be a very tough decision for us. But I would say, I would hope that people aid us and help us and enlighten us and letting us know what would work for them and the different ideas that we can present to this district. Thank you.
trustee Thorpe.
You know, I like to begin with the end in mind. So earlier today, Dr. Maliko said something about May as like a deadline. Is that when we're saying the deadline is for us to make a decision about what we want to do going forward? Or is it expected that we come to the decision tonight?
Uh, we had stated in the last meeting, the realistic ability to put it on the ballot would be a May board meeting. I just want to correct with the team, right, Dave? And that, that was discussed at the last meeting. So we, we don't have to make the decision tonight. This was never intended for a final decision.
Great, just because we're talking about a survey that hasn't gone out to the community and forums that are supposed to happen over the next couple of weeks. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
I was not, I was not anticipating on making a decision today.
No, we're not.
Okay, that's just making sure.
trustee Petrikov.
Then the question would be, because we have a lot of options in front of us and a lot of moving parts at this point in time. And we all have our own individual ideas of, about a direction we may or may not want to move in. When we next meet, are we going to have all those logistics in place to then?
I think that moves us into the next item, please.
Are we ready for the next?
Yes.
So then the next, um, would be next steps slash timeline slash review.
Is that what you're looking, okay.
Yeah. Um, but I, I just want to make sure we're all clear then that, that at this point in time, we've put out a lot of options that everybody is then going to go home and kind of consider. And then we'll take in the next set of data, I'm assuming, that comes from the town halls and, and upcoming survey to incorporate at the May meeting. Because I do know that time was of the essence in order for us to be, we would want to have something that we could make a motion on and move on then. But we still need to have this conversation then because everybody's still going to have difference of ideas of what they want to see, whether we move to a bond, whether a sinking fund, whether we do nothing, where it's with buildings, where, then we still got a lot of conversation we need to have in order to get a, something, uh, moved in May. So, you know, I want to make sure that we're, we're all prepared in that sense of, um, understanding of what we need to bring to the table. Because we really aren't having a discussion right now, I don't see, uh, about all those options or anything at this point either.
trustee Mazza.
Trustee Petrikov, if you look at under number three on this agenda, we do have the five different options, the, that Dr. Maliko read.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we could be going around and, and talking about these different options right now. However, I still am in need of, uh, the information that we're going to do, the town halls. I think that will add a lot of perhaps new ideas. Think that may add to this list. And then in May, that's where we need to make a decision, if we need to go in November. Because we need to give also an ample time for communications, an ample time for the entire district to be ready and the constituents to understand our proposal. Uh, but we could have two meetings in May. I don't mind.
If we're talking about the decision has to be in, made in May, would it make a difference if it's early May or late May?
Um, David, or Tom?
I think that would make a difference, wouldn't it?
We could have, if needed, we could have another meeting at, the week after or something like that. Tom?
What I am kind of thinking, um, and let me have your input, board. Um, we have, I believe, some small group meetings, or we can have some small group meetings coming up. We can also get the information that's going to be coming from the survey and such. Um, we can take that in individually, kind of wrap our heads around it, get an idea. And maybe through the small group meetings that you have with the trustees, you could perhaps hone in on what those options that you think would be the best or what your, uh, recommended options would be. And then we could come and discuss those options at the next board meeting. That's a thought. I saw trustee Barry's hand first. Go ahead.
Go ahead, sir.
Then it looks like we're doing it behind the scenes. Even though we are, even though we are allowed to, to gather, gather in small groups of three or less, uh, then it looks like a lot of the discussion is happening away from the public.
Well, I'm not looking for that to happen, but yes, I see what you're saying.
It gets back to the, the whole concern people seem to have nowadays about transparency. And they, they want to make sure they're seeing everything.
Well, we can't be meeting seven days a week, 24. And we are going to be thinking different things.
I agree. And the one concern I would have from what trustee Mosib had said is about additional ideas. If we've already got five ideas here and more ideas come, the one thing that we've learned in the past, and I'll look back more when we did the redistricting. More choices we give, the more difficult it is going to be for us to come to the decision.
I wasn't looking for more, I was looking for honing in on the ones that we have and maybe tweaking them, getting them more specific. Because they're kind of general right now. So that was kind of my thought, but trustee Barry.
The reason that trustee Thorpe, uh, was looking right at me when you brought that up is because, you know, when we leave our district, our families, we get a chance to have discussions. We learn more about each other and, you know, get on the same page. So one point is that on the agenda, it says move forward with the November 2022 bond as noted in the BIQ committee presentation. That's what probably threw everybody off. Trustee Mosiv and trustee, uh, Thorpe's question. Are we making a decision tonight? That's kind of vague a little bit. Uh, point number two is absolutely not. A decision like this needs to be out.
I'm not talking about the decision. I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, it's okay. Decision like this needs to be out in the open. We can talk about transparency. It has to be out in the open. The discussion I had is, and I'm going to go ahead and put it out there, is I'm starting to have a problem with the small group meetings. Anything that you should call for a closed session should not be discussed enclosed in the in the small group meetings. Those are my thoughts, and we can't look into it. Maybe we reach out to an attorney about that. Because I don't want to go backwards, we want to move forwards. There were times where, you know, my voice was not meaning, because decisions were made, small group meetings and moving forward. We got to the table, it's like my, one of my colleagues and I would look at each other and like shake our hands up and end up with a six one voter or five two votes. So we have to be very, very careful with small group meetings. It's good to discuss curriculum moving forward, recommendations for, you know, employees, good. But anything, buy in a building, selling a building, anything that should be, we should call for a closed session. That's where it should be. Everything else should be talked about here. There was one more point, and go ahead trustee Petrikov.
Go ahead trustee Petrikov.
Well, I I will just clarify one point. It it it, there is nothing precluding board members from having a private conversation with each other saying, hey, what do you think about this? Where am I? As long as you don't share the information you get from point A to three other people.
Hundred percent.
In order for you to make, to have some kind of idea about where your thoughts are going to turn at the public table when we come to see. So I don't want anybody to think that they can't go and say, hey, Joe, why do you have an issue with this or what are you thinking about it? As long as you don't go, okay, Sally and and Jerry, Joe says this, you know? Because then a decision is being made behind the scenes because you're sharing an opinion that could potentially shape the public vote.
Correct.
So I just want everybody to be clear about how this works with with a public body when it comes to having the conversations. You are allowed to to say if if you feel comfortable with that, but just be cautious.
Completely agree with you, and I'll be calling you tomorrow morning at nine thirty.
You've called me before.
I'm just talking about when we say small group meetings. Our executive officers, I don't have to mention, we only have two of them, our executive officers are in those meetings, and they're not bound by the Open Meetings Act.
No, they are not.
We have two ethical people, and I get that part, but that's where we have to be careful. That's all.
trustee Watts.
So I think what I'm hearing from trustee Mosip and from trustee Petrikov and from others is that the timeframe and timeline in which we need to get this done does need to have options for us to be able to have discussions in open. So, and what trustee Mosip would say is, I see these options that we have, but I think the weight, not the weight, but I think I would like to see the survey and the discussions from the town hall also be brought up because that'll give me a different lens to look at these various options from. But can we have that slide back about when that those dates were again, just so that we can then discuss this now, looking forward to what May looks like? Is it in our presentation?
No, not in this one.
You mean, you mean the one that's up right there?
Oh, so it's it's.
For the sort of the town halls?
Those are the town halls. Okay, so they will be, they would end in April with a potential of a fifth one. Provide a morning session for those that cannot attend at five P M. So I would say right now, we should probably then look at the calendar and say that I think there's two two times that we would have to meet. Number one, to have a discussion as to the findings that are coming out from these sessions and have a discussion. And then the second time, then that would give us an opportunity to vote then. Because I think this may then create an opportunity for us to have additional questions going forward. Because I don't think it's going to give us necessarily a conclusion, but we may have additional questions saying, okay, well, I didn't think about X, Y, and Z. You know, Tom, can you come back and address what these options would look like? So I would propose having two times that we'd meet in May.
Well, I want, go ahead trustee Thorpe.
We we began this at our March study session, and we changed this from a regular board meeting to a hybrid so it could be again a study session. So my concern is that we're kicking the can down the road and and not getting to a point where we're we're ready to go. Now, we want to get the community feedback, but we also don't want to, we can't keep pushing this back. So I'd be more likely to say that if if the survey, which hasn't gone out yet, could be returned to us by the twenty fifth, which we've held two weeks from today as a possible board meeting, we could at least have that information while the community forums are still ongoing, so we can at least have a good idea. I just don't know that we we want to try to do two meetings in
May.
In May, and I'm already thinking that we do have a holiday on a Monday in May.
The second, yeah.
Second and third.
Well, would I guess my then, would we be able to have a discussion during the next meeting and a vote? Or do we, would we procedurally have to do?
We can do that.
We could.
Okay, so the discussion is limited to thirty minutes. But go ahead trustee Mosz.
I I'd say this is the most important meeting, or meeting. This is the most important decision that we will perhaps be making this year as as a body. And I think we need all of the time in the world to make, to get this right. I know we were criticized even last time that we rushed this over, and we did not. We we were discussing it, I think I wasn't on the board, I came on the board in April. But the boards was discussing it from December. So four months before I came on the board, and when I came, it was already a live discussion.
We had started the November before.
Number before, yeah, that's, thank you trustee Petrikov. So that, and in this discussion, we've been talking about it, Dr. Malakos, for a while. It's been on the agenda, talking about possible bond, possible proposal. I just want to make sure, I will dedicate, I will free my calendar for evenings and 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 to make sure that I I've done my part as as somebody who is entrusted in making sure that we make a good decision. A decision that is based on good data. And the information that the town halls, surveys, the feedback that we will get in the community as we're discussing these options, we will have a lot of constituents reach out to you and be like, hey, I like that kind of number five, I like that number one, number two. And I would like to hear more of, I'm I'm doing my homework right now, is I'm going to look at other districts and what they were doing and what, how they were successful. I know we keep bringing on our, but there are so many other districts that pass bonds, that pass sinking funds, and they're rebuilding their schools, even Detroit is doing it. I want to know how Detroit is doing it. So, and not 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 like looking back or looking down in Detroit. In fact, we should learn from Detroit right now of how they are rebuilding their schools and reinvesting now in their schools. So I want to make sure that we get this right. I'm willing to meet even three meetings in May if it needs to. I know that might be a hassle to all of us, but we need to make sure that when we go to the voters, we tell them that we did everything possible, we researched all of the options. This is the best that we've came through, and we hope that you can support us.
See, that's where I am though right now, because one of our options is not to go to the voters. So that's where my concern is now. If you look at one of the options.
To do nothing.
It's to not move.
This year, this year.
So, so that's an org for sinking fund, and I just mean, there's a lot of options. So I just think that there's a way that we can narrow it down and clarify what our possible options are. So that's that's what I was getting at instead of, because a lot of these options kind of seem, I don't want to say in conflict with each other, but just don't seem clear. You know, go for a sinking fund or go for a, not go at all, or, you know, it's just, I think they need to be clarified when we go to have a discussion and vote on them. That was what I was trying to get at. Trustee Barry.
Tom, thank you very much. All of my questions I've had coming in here were answered today. Very valuable information. I have a good idea where I'm at right now, but I still want to hear from the constituents, okay? To say that we're going to come in here in one meeting, and with all this information, you know, we might get the survey early, then the other information, maybe the Thursday before, something like that. Then we come in here to make a decision, I think it's a lot of pressure. I would be okay with maybe a follow up meeting to make the final decision. Again, that's what I wanted to point out, if we decide to go out at all, we might just say, yes, I know last last meeting we spoke about it, and we said that, you know, if you guys want me to do a good job, I need to get an answer from you by May. But we also talked about maybe we don't need to do anything. We don't need to put that much pressure on the administration. I completely agree with trustee Mosip. Let's do this right.
Absolutely.
I do not want to see, you know, if we, if I'm not confident, it's going to be, we're going to put, we're going to put a product out there that's going to get at least sixty eight percent approval, I'm going to be having the problems, so you know, supporting it.
Okay, well then, let me just direct a a conversation real quick. What is everybody thinking about just, okay, hold on a second, let me. What is everybody thinking about just the the possibility of moving forward with a bond? Because that is the big picture. Let's just, I want some input on that currently. Because right now we have, just if you look at around the nation, people are angry, and if you put anything towards voters, a lot of times, they're just going to say, I'm not interested in anything. I'm already paying more than I usually do for gas, more than I usually do for my housing, more than I, you know, no matter what we put out there, if we put out there, we're going to fix everything, and it was only going to cost us two million dollars, a lot of people would say, I'm not doing it, because they just are fed up and angry and have had enough. So that's the discussion that I want to, we don't have to come to a conclusion now, but that's a discussion I think we need to have. Go ahead trustee Dan Broglio.
I think at this point, I don't think it's a good idea, only because we don't have a good product right now. Unless somebody puts something in front of me that I'm sold on, you know, I can't vote yes. So that's my opinion.
Okay.
Well, I was going to say, go back, I was going to comment back about the timeframe and the timeline, and I would suggest that in the May school meeting, if we were to have additional questions beyond the thirty minutes, I think that would then answer that we would need additional meeting. So I thought I was going to.
Well, we could expand the discussion.
Well, and I think that's where I would agree that I think we should have enough time that whatever the results would be from the community, we would be able to to have a an open discussion about that, so.
Okay.
Madam President.
trustee Thorpe.
Then I'll bring up two things. The first would be that we want to make sure that that discussion time is protected, and it's not being eaten into by, say, a presentation that the administration puts together, that could be in a separate section. But I'll go back to your original question, and and in, I'm starting to think a sinking fund could be a safe option to get something for November that gives us some money. It gives us a bigger Band-Aid, but it still doesn't give us a solution. So I'm viewing it right now as a safe fallback.
That's where I've been kind of, my thoughts have been going, trustee. Barry, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's fine. It's a long night. With all the information that's been presented, I'm not there yet going out for a bond, to be honest with you. I would have, I would need more information to change my mind, so.
Okay.
Maybe we don't need a second meeting next month, maybe one meeting, maybe we, you know, I don't know if it was intentional earlier or just this was, he was sharing his thoughts, trustee Thorpe, when he said maybe the theme tonight is a hybrid. We have a hybrid agenda, we're talking about buses, the whole nine yards. But maybe, maybe it's a hybrid. Or maybe we go out and, you know, for, you know, sinking fund, maybe a one and a half mil, which raises, you know, what is it, about six and a half million dollars a year? We can get to our, you know, our necessities right away. Get to, you know, the roofs that we need to fix and electricity. If there's a couple furnaces that's on, you know, on the fence, maybe we can get to those. Bathrooms, I should come up with a slogan for Dr. Malakos, fix the. I know, but that requires money, that requires money. So, I mean, if we get, if we get, if we hear from the survey and the constituents and they're saying it's it's, we need to go out for a bond, that might change my position, but where I'm at right now is would be a no.
Yep. See, I think that's.
I am, I am completely in agreement with everyone's sentiments at this point, who've shared it. I I am very hesitant to put out for another bond. We already saw the millage failure in the last election for the city. We know that inflation has really, and they're talking about potential recession coming on board. I I would be, like you said, a fallback of of a Band-Aid approach with a sinking fund to get us through while we're, because we can always put up for a bond later on when we've really got something that we can sell and and really promote. But we, I I don't think we have the time to really put together something, and we're going to get the same arguments that we got the last time. I I really fear that we're going to be hearing a lot of, it it won't, it won't be forty nine fifty one, it'll go back the other way again. Now, quite frankly, I'll spend the money if it, if we win a bond at fifty one percent. You might not like that the numbers didn't come up, but if we were able to capture that money, I I'm not going to turn my nose up to it in order to protect our school buildings. But that being said, I would like to know that what we're doing is is a strong enough promotion that that we can, and we will never have that confidence right now that we had in the past, that we'd get a seventy percent passage rate. I just don't think that we're we're in that position for the next few years. But I don't know that I want to put the pressure on us and the pressure on administration to try to promote something under these circumstances either. I'm 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 very leery that we'll have that kind of success.
No matter what we put into it.
Yeah.
trustee Barry.
Yes, I want to make sure that, you know, we had a committee that met, you know, numerous of times to respect.
That we don't.
Yeah, we're not saying that we're 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 voting no. We just need more information. And the the committee members that I heard from, even today, we heard that, what is your vision? Do we have a vision if we, even if we say infrastructure versus new buildings? Do we have a vision with the new buildings? What is our needs? You know, some people in the committee were talking about, you know, maybe overcrowding at the high schools. And I think, I guess that's a national thing going on right now, a lot of districts. Is it a high school? Is it two elementary schools? What is the vision? And we have to, before we go out and ask the taxpayers for a hundred and twenty to a hundred and ninety million dollars to build buildings, don't we have to start looking at, you know, land? We need to start, that's what I was trying to say earlier, we need to have that vision. What does it look like? Maybe it's not this current board that's going to make the final decision, but we need to start that discussion, and hopefully that started tonight.
And I think that thirty year longitudinal study that we're going to get will help us in that area.
And and that's what you mentioned earlier, number four does say, put the bond program on hold until we have that study in our hands.
Right.
So just to sit here and say, let's go out for a bond, then we'll go to constituents and try to figure out, what do we do with that money? Wrong way to do things. We may, you know, moving forward, yeah, we don't want to do that.
Hold on just a second, trustee Mosip, and then I'm going to go to doctor.
So what I'm hearing from my colleagues, madam president, is that we are definitely, in this short term, not considering a bond proposal. However, we do recognize the necessity for repairs, major repairs in our schools and the infrastructure need. So, and at the same time, we need to be looking for that vision, and we need to be looking for something that we can all get behind first on this table. I I think it's very crucial that we get in the buy in of all board members before, and I would hope that we get a seven, you know, an anonymous vote once we say we're moving this forward and we're doing a full study. I asked for this last time, and I did get some information, but I think we need to do a, like a larger study of when does this school is going to cease to exist in in our expectation and our calculation. Because that will determine to say, okay, I need this much money to invest in building newer schools. And I I will say this again, I am always, it's not, I'm always pro-modern schools. I think they're they're the right thing to do. We may take the bullet right now rather than just waiting until later. So I do recognize, though, that this is definitely weird times with inflation and and things, people are very worried about finances. And our city has voted now two millages in a, voted down two millages in a row. So they're looking for definitely something that is out of the box, something that is creative. And I'm glad that we're going into this discussion right now, to say that we need more information. We need, the the these time, town halls still need to go on, and I think we should hold off on them. We need to still hear from our constituents. We actually should have, should have done that right after twenty nineteen bond failure. However, you know, it is what it is. We're we're the children of tomorrow. So let's let's do this right, and let's focus more on finding ways of telling everybody in the in the community, this is what you're going to get with this, with this kind of plan in a very, very creative way. Thank you.
So I just, thank you. I just wanted to mention that one of the things I think we did when we had deep discussions with administration, it did have to do with the committee. Because we heard differing things from the committee, and our administration has now taken a step back and say, well, based on what we heard from the committee, we need more time then. We we don't feel we can do, so we were honoring the work of the committee, and I wasn't in the meetings, but they reported it all back to me, and we took a deep dive into it. And that's why we're coming up with this thirty year study, which is the vision for the, which will be all part of that. It'll be part of that. You can connect it even to, I think, discussions, and I think we've been leaders in the state. And I know you, with our strategic plan and the work we've done for education. And I know you, with our strategic plan and the work we've done for educational programs. We can talk about the summer program and other things, or the early college. But I think that this would be a good option for the board to look at, but then understanding we will have these short-term needs that we have to take care of. And the bathroom issue, and I'm glad you brought it up because I did confirm from administration that there are bathrooms with stalls on them. And just so everyone knows, they're, they're there. But the issue with the bathrooms that we were hearing from the committees and all the work that I hear from students, these were like major upgrades to changing the way a bathroom is used and operated. You know, you wouldn't necessarily have doors. You'd have that walk-around. They'd be, you know, maybe facilities that things couldn't fall down or other things that have gone on. So I think that we, we did, administration basically took a step back as we were hearing this feedback, you know, from the commi, the community committee, the V I P, and that's what I was getting. They were in those meetings. I see David nodding his head, you know, when we discussed this after. But it doesn't mean we can't consider other options to look at our short-term needs, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't doubting. I would just point you out, you know, I respect the community, so thank you for your remarks.
No, I know, and I do know, I believe Fortson and Tom, the, um, the bath, the bathroom thing, I mean, I think they're scheduled for upgrades at Fortson. But I did, I kind of, I like the way you framed that, when you fixed the.
I didn't say it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know. You stopped.
Trustee Watts. So, I mean, we have a strategic plan that is the living document, that is our roadmap for curriculum. And I think we need to align our vision for what we want our infrastructure to complement the strategic plan. I think if we use a strategic plan for our, our, our go-to document, I think that'll give us what we need in terms of having a vision for, for the future, along with having the dialogue and the, the feedback from the town halls, along with having the feedback from the, the survey and having the thirty-year longitudinal. I think having all of those, it's not one that supersedes the other, but I think collectively, if we use a strategic plan as our base roadmap, as our template, then I think we can then have a strong vision for the future here. So that's my two cents.
Trustee Thorpe.
The words we use matter, and what we've heard from several trustees is, is that they've got concerns about a bond. A bond is different than a millage, but to the taxpayer, it's money in both cases. So we could be not in favor of going for a bond. We could be in favor of going for a millage. Some people might think, well, what's the difference? And we, we know the difference from our discussion tonight, but just, we all need to be aware and make sure we're putting that out there to the public so they understand what the difference really is.
Trustee Barry.
Very good point, but that goes back to the message. I guess my question is, is it the same timeline for, for a bond or a sinking fund? Just so we're not putting pressure on communication.
Tom, you're getting your steps today.
The bond is a much longer process.
Yes.
You know, a millage is a straight, raising dollars for a particular purpose, so it's, it's a much shorter timeframe.
What is, like, what point would the administration need a decision so we can?
Well, I think a lot of it falls on the public notification of what's going to happen, so they have the opportunity to respond to the board once a decision is made.
When, when trustee Thorpe was talking, it just said to me that, yes, we want to make sure that we educate our, you know, our constituents on what a sinking fund is. It's not, we're not going out there for a quarter billion dollars, and that's going to be up to communication and.
Correct, and then the whatever date of, the selection of whatever date you want to have that millage on the ballot for approval, that, that will determine the backup, the number of days for the legal requirement to call the election.
Okay, I got a good idea. Thank you, sir.
Don't go anywhere.
Trustee Thorpe.
If it was a millage, when would we have to have the verbiage into the state for it to be on the November ballot?
November ballot would be August.
But again, again, that's not enough time.
Well, the bonds don't require state approval.
But I know, but for a state approval, you need it before August, right?
For the bonding, if you're doing the state approved, yes.
Thank you. Sorry.
Trustee Barry.
But again, yes, it's August, but at the same time, I heard loud and clear from communications that they need time.
We, we're going to use communications to get things out right away, but we don't have to have the wording all figured out till August.
But we have to make a decision. I still would say we should be prepared in May to make that.
I'm starting to feel that way. I'm starting to feel that way.
Okay.
I have a good idea. This is a very good discussion, everybody. Thank you.